First two of mine. Okay, I had to approve a financial yesterday. This is Resolution 16-079 as approved by me pursuant to a motion approved January 5th, 2016 authorized me to execute in case of lack of or interest and/or sessions canceled on a regular financial day on a daily financial day you approved required approvals for county financials on behalf of the Board thirty near 2016 and authorized by O R C 305.30. This was simply an appropriation transfer for the Juvenile Court moving $1,528.28 out of training and funding salaries account and a small amount in Medicare and health care dollars. So, that was approved. And, second thing, I had some actions that I approved yesterday as authorized by Resolution 16-005, and those include the contract agreement with Chardinaria Chamber of Commerce Annual Classic Car and Bike Show on Saturday, or on Sunday, July 10th, 2016, and also if it rains, the rain date would be July 17th. I accepted a resignation from Dog Wardens Office for General Wells Part-Time Shelter Attendance, and I approved the service contract for Department of Water Resources with L.A. Rose Paving Company for driveway paving services at the Service Center Water Tower and the Service Center Water Plant for four months in the Mount Mount Lucy City, 2017.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Two questions, actually. First of all, the item number one, as I'm looking at this, how is that resolution different from the second? Why is it we have two separate approvals? I mean, you're generally given authority to-
Well, one is for financials, and we had that in place a little bit longer. The second is for me to approve other designated actions that you delegate me for.
And that's what item one was?
Yeah.
The other category?
Yeah.
And that one didn't make today's financials, for what reason?
The auditor wanted processed yesterday. Juvenile Court did not want that going through regular financials, but the auditor received an opinion from the prosecutor that it still hadn't been approved as part of the Commissioners' overall budget, so I approved it rather than being on the financials.
Because that would've seemed to be easier, then?
No.
Okay, I just was curious.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Commissioner's office is requesting the Board approval and execute on minutes for the meeting of June 21st to 2016.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillane?
Aye.
Good morning.
Oh, yes. Good.
I've given a highlights this week on the financials. It's been like for the last couple of weeks, so we're making up for it this week. Under the supplementals and appropriation transfers, we have a supplemental appropriation request for the JFS Public Assistance Fund. We have appropriation transfer requests from General Fund Contingency to cover juvenile court-appointed council fees, and we have an appropriation transfer request from the General Fund Contingency to return appropriations to the Sheriff's Office for web check fees deposited into the General Fund. Under the Cash Transfer section, we have a cash transfer out of the General Fund for the debt payments for the water tower and treatment plant, a cash transfer from the General Fund to fund the 800 Communications Permanent Improvements Fund, a cash transfer from the General Fund to the County Home for third quarter funding, and a cash transfer from the General Fund to Community Development for their third quarter funding as well. Under Incumbrances, we have two travel encumbrances. One is for Community Development, one is for JFS. We have two contracts, a contract for $35,660 to Armored Resistance for the JFS Service Desk Security Upgrades, and a contract for $115,730 to LG Bay, Inc. for Water Resources for engineering and surveying services.
Commissioner's office is requesting the Board approval and execute Resolution 16-080, item number financial approval in June 2016.
Actually, I have two questions. Okay, where do you put mine?
Sir?
Don't mind. I had noticed on item one, you and I talked about this briefly in the back, this had to do with the $50,000 legal fees. They've only bringing this up because, as I was talking to Ian, this appears to be a pretty significant increase. The dollars amount aren't necessarily significant, but it's a significant increase over what we paid last year.
Right.
So, it looks like there may be a trend here. My concern is this, since we're paying the bill and the Juvenile Court is not seeing the bill, they just make the appointments, they may not be in tune with or in touch with the decisions that they're making. So, it might be worth while to reach out to Kim and talk to her about that, just so we can, if there's a trend here, we're aware of it, we can be able to track it and so on and so forth.
Yeah, I mean, a part of the reason would be more this year is I don't think, we didn't start doing this until partly through last year. So, we're doing the full year this year, and when we did the appropriation, maybe based on what we spent last year, that would be part of it. The other issue, you know, and the court sees these, the judge actually, on each document, the judge signs off. The issue that I've noticed in the past is sometimes it's a timing issue, where we don't pay for it from the attorney, because we only have 60 days, I believe, from when the case is considered closed to get it to the Ohio Public Defender Commission to get our 40 percent match reimbursement. And we have in the past lost some reimbursement because it was delayed somewhere in the step, either by the attorney or somewhere else in the process before it got to our office. So, that's a concern as well.
And, just for problem avoidance, might be worth bringing it up, just to make sure that we're, everybody's on the same page. It used to be the court paid for this directly, so they were right close to it, and there was no, they could recognize any issues right away. Since we're disconnected now, it's, you know, close communications is probably more important, so, anyway. Thanks, Ian. Go ahead. I'll make that motion. Second?
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillane?
Aye.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is Todd Kesslerich. He is the Assistant Vice President of Client Services and Comp Management, our third-party administrator, and we're here to talk to you this morning about our group retrospective agreement for 2017. We've been part of this program since 2015 with many rebates and accolades that Todd will now talk about.
Yes, thank you. We were, we were actually trying to identify the day that we started representing the county, because back so far, I don't even remember. I think I was around since that time.
It has been 20 years.
Yeah, at least 20 years.
Well, the county formed in, was it 19?
He's not that old.
I go back 27 years with Comp Management, so it's very, pretty far back then, but it's been, it's been a great relationship, and, I mean, you guys have been, I guess, having Bobby Joe, Warran's, and her in, and she's, she's actually accepted a new position with the company, so I'm kind of stepping back in after I handed it back to her.
Congratulations, of course.
I will, I will. She's, she's a star performer, and I already named this. I'm going to hand out a couple documents for you. Pass one down the way there. So, the program, the first document is outlining, you know, some of the performance of the county themselves, and I, and I have to tell you that, you know, the, the way that the county goes by it, and I'll give Kathy the accolades for this, you guys do it the right way. We have a lot of clients who we represent, we don't take ownership in the program, and, you know, sometimes they're lucky and, and they're able to kind of continue on with favorable rates, but, you know, my, my philosophy has always been you have to put things in place and try to increase your chances of success. It's a challenging system, injuries are going to occur, sometimes severe injuries, but if you have things in place, when those do occur, you can kind of mitigate the losses. And I think we've had, you know, over the years, we've had our share of opportunities to be educated in the system and sorts of claims, and I think what you're looking at are some trending over the last four or five years that show that, you know, we have the actual program. Kathy does meet with, with our, our group, both the MCO and the TPA side on a quarterly basis, and has very great ownership of the, of the initiative program. On the second document, it outlines the, the current rating program that the county is involved with. Historically, you know, with the Bureau, they've had various options available, I think going back many years, there was a group rating option, which was a very comfortable program that most employers who get very favorable rates were able to get into, and it's a look back and to determine the eligibility for the group rating program. With, you know, since 2010, there has been a new program that came into play that the Bureau offers in its group retrospective rating. So, as opposed to a look back to determine the eligibility, group retrospective rating is essentially grouping and first together common employers and then determining the success of the program based on future activity. So, that is, again, a program that started in 2010. We put together a group with all of the counties, I think we started off with about 15 counties at that, at that time, and Jogga County was one of those initial participants in that program, and has performed very, very well. The way that the program works is you incur your claims over that initial year, 2010 calendar year, and then a year after that, they start evaluating on three consecutive annual basis to determine whether or not there's going to be a refund or if there's going to be an assessment. Over the lifetime of the program, we've enjoyed refunds throughout that program, and to date, we have Jogga County receiving $853,580 in refunds since 2010, so that's, that is impressive numbers. So, what we're looking at is kind of a breakdown that started in 2011. The way that the Bureau hands out the refunds is they're going to hold back, you know, 20% on the first, 10% on the second, and then on that final assessment, and then they're going to do it all. So, we have full payouts in 2010, 2011, and you see in 2012, there was an evaluation that took place, and we're waiting for that money to be released. The way that the, the funds are released by the Bureau is that since you've been in the program for three consecutive years, or continuing, those, those, each year is kind of stacked on top of each other, so to speak. So, and that's important to note, because in 2015, there were actually some incurred losses that, that happened, and right now, that first assessment that's going to come out is going to be at, or that first evaluation is actually going to be an assessment for the entire group. However, as we project things out over that third and final evaluation, it's, it's projected to come out at about 27 percent refund. So, when that assessment hits on that first year of 2015, we still have the 14, the 13 rebates that are going to absorb that loss, we're not in any cash to a audit pot in the county, which they're going to be, or refund is going to come in.
Just not as big.
Just, yeah, just potentially not as big. And, you know, the, the other thing that's important to note is, you know, when you have, there are 55 counties that are participating in the program this year. When you have 55 counties and all of their claims are going to impact everybody else's, you're going to have somebody who's going to have a spike, and unfortunately, it was our turn for that.
It was our turn, and I, and I will address the issue that, since 2010, you know, I've gone to all these meetings, like, you know, our modifier is really low, look at that county over there, wow. This year was our year. We had some catastrophic claims last year, nothing that could have really been prevented, and so everybody's pointing the finger at Jogga County now, but that's the nice thing about being in a pool, is that it kind of washes out. We've had good years, last year was a bad year, and gosh, we are in this pool that we're still going to get money back, just like our Subco program, you know, good and bad, so I think we're in a really good spot with this program.
And one of the other important factors is that if, if this might have happened when the group was a smaller group of 15 counties, it probably would've been a little bit more of an impact because margin's still in a smaller pot. But I think we're going to be fine moving forward, especially since you guys have been kind of chugging along in that program for consecutive years. And I will say that, you know, we have multiple group retro programs as well. The county program that we have through CCAO, they do it the right way as well. They're a type of group, they meet on a quarterly basis collectively to get, get together to discuss everything, so everybody's kind of out there in the open and knows exactly what's going on. We really only have one other group that we put together that does that, they also perform very well. So, everything is in place to increase those chances of certain success, not just individually what the county and the captains doing, but also the, the program we have together with the county.
And all the safety efforts that Linda Brumhenny does with all the directors, and that makes a huge impact, too. So, when you combine the safety efforts and the claims management and comp management, I think we have a really winning team here, I do.
So, quick question for you. The actual Workers' Comp Program has changed, if I understand things correctly, over the last few years. What kind of impact has that made on all of us, anything at all?
It's, it's a learning curve, that's for sure, and what you're referring to is historically, employers in Ohio would pay their premium in arrears, and to our knowledge, it's probably the only insurance program that we can think of that's ever been used, or was paid for later. So, the Bureau has, they still have a very large surplus of money, and they use that, you know, some of that surplus money to transition from paying the arrears to paying most rest of it. And because what that, that data would actually stack two payments on top of each other, but for all public employers, Bureau gave a 50% on the front end and 50% on the back end, so it was essentially a clear cash flow. So, the, the challenge is now trying to base everything off of estimated payroll instead of actual payroll, so once that cycle goes through, that's going to get true at the end, which I don't know that your payroll fortunately fluctuates, you know, too dramatically. You know, you would have maybe a construction company that might do big jobs, and they have a little bit more, it's kind of a challenge, but we've done a very good job of working Comp Management, working very closely with the Bureau, and we do a very good job of trying to educate our clients, and again, with Kathy being involved in, you know, buying into the program, she's, she's up to something, everything, we're passing along, so.
So, you're not seeing the changes really going to translate into something in the future, it's going to, we have a plan for thinking about whatever the case is.
We have been, we have been planning and thinking about it.
Is the Brexit thing going to affect us? Just curious. Everybody else is, you know, worried about it, markets are concerned.
Like you said, just our four executives.
Yeah. But I just want to make a note, too, that, you know, that whole million dollar back thing that happened a couple of years ago, these refunds are, are separate from that. You know, we did get money back from the Bureau because they had too much, and so they started giving, siphoning that money back. That does not have anything to do with this program. That $853,000 was totally on this program, and we do get money back now under the PWRE, and now I'm going to look silly, because you're, you're going to, I don't know that much about it, but we don't get very much. Jogga County, everyone else is getting loans in Jogga Counties on the loan.
The Bureau ended up refunding PWRE premiums, so the good news is you probably didn't pay as much going in.
Excellent, yeah. Very wise financial on our part, right?
That, that check, I believe, is supposed to be coming out if it hasn't already, I think some taxes.
And so, we'll get an additional $5,000, and there's some counties that are getting a million dollars back, and that was the first thing I thought was, well, we probably, we didn't pay yet, which is a good thing, because they didn't use their money all those years, but we only, we get, we do get five, about $5,000 back from the Bureau.
Whatever.
Yeah. It's a challenge. It's, it's, it's kind of a puzzle piece to tie.
Thank you. All right, thanks for coming up. Any more questions? Good job. I always like it when there's, kind of good news.
Yeah.
I want to hold my breath, because you never know with this.
I know.
There's a lot of truth in that. Have a great day.
Commissioner's office is requesting the Board approval and author as the President of Board to execute the 2017 County Commissioners Association of Ohio Workers' Compensation Retrospective Rating Plan Agreement in the Bureau of Workless Compensation and Employer Statement between the Jogga County Board of Commissioners and the CCAO Service Corporation.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Let's see where you have something, please. Okay. Well, I can explain this one.
We have two.
Yeah, there's two, right? Explain both, so we can be certain. The first one is they asked the Board to approve and execute an agreement to provide fiscal consulting services to Jogga County, Ohio. This is related to our annual sale of debt as we roll over old notes and issue new notes for the portion of that debt we're retiring that we're not able to pay down out, the money we put in the General Fund for that purpose. So, we are, we have $3.3 million worth of debt that's coming due in August, we're going to be paying down 1.3 million of that out of our debt retirement fund, money we've transferred out of the General Fund. That leaves us needing to finance $2 million. And what Satsina Associates LLC does is this individual has contacts in the financial world, and he will go out and advise potential investors that the county's going to be issuing $2 million worth of debt, and that we're a very safe and stable investment. So, he's trying to get multiple investors to bid to be able to issue those, or to buy that debt from us. So, they're bidding, and whoever offers us the lowest interest rate will win the bid in August when the debt holder is selected. So, Satsina has knowledge in the marketplace, and they will make sure that anybody out there who might be competitive or offers debt at a low rate will bid on this, on this debt.
Until $4,500 is.
$4,500, just for their services.
Is paid for.
And going around talking to the auditor and soliciting investor firms to offer to buy our debt.
The Audit's Office is requesting the Board approval and execute the agreement to provide fiscal consulting services to Jogga County, Ohio, between the Board of Commissioners and Satsina and Associates LLC for the period of June 8th, 2016 through June 7th, 2017, in the Mount Mount Lucy 45,000 dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillane? Commissioner Spillane?
The item number eight is kind of a head-scratcher, in that the Auditor's Office apparently has been advised by the State Auditor that in order for the Jogga Park District to establish an agency fund for the Park District, we know as the K9 Donation Fund. So, they want to set up a fund, so people want to donate apparently into something related to K9s. The quest for establishment of that fund, apparently according to the State Auditor, has to originate with the Board of County Commissioners, even though the Park District's budget is not in your budget. So, kind of unique situation, but we're happy to help if that's what it takes, I guess.
There's a, a.
Does the, does the Park District have their own K9 fund?
Yes, they have two.
They have two?
They have two now.
Okay, I mean, I don't deal with the Park District, so I don't.
Rosenharle, I believe, not yet long ago, pronounced that they had down two members. Rodar, that came from, used to be the Sheriff's Office, is now the District, and another one was, I think, our dog. So, they have two.
So, this one I didn't catch.
Oh.
I'd say, yeah, was this new, or just added?
No, this one, we were advising this yesterday, the Auditor's Office had sent over a request. Was it Friday, Ken?
It came in late on Friday afternoon, which I was not here, so I didn't get it until yesterday morning, but all Ron had sent me was the request for action. When the original paperwork came in yesterday, there's a letter from the State Auditor's Office.
Okay, because I replaced that, a message to Ron, who was out of the office yesterday, saying, if the Commissioners don't, if the Park District budget does not meet Commissioner's budget, why would the Commissioner be taking this action? Apparently, the State Auditor has advised that in order to do this, it does require your.
So, we're approving a fund that we don't understand, we don't know what the purpose is, and we don't have anybody from the Park Board here to explain it.
Well, if you vote to approve, you're approving the creation of a fund. There's no financial commitment on, on the part of this board. It's just the State Auditor will not allow a new fund to be set up in the Auditor's accounting system unless there's action initiated by the statutory board that is charged with starting that process, and apparently that's ours.
I, I get that part, and I probably don't have a problem with this fund. My, my question is, we're, we're put in the process for a reason. We, we wouldn't be a part of this process unless somebody thought at some point in time it had value, and that value is to act as the citizens, taxpayers, check on the system, to ask the question, what is this fund for?
Well.
And I don't understand what this fund is for.
Well, it says K9 donation, so I would assume, this is kind of like, you created a fund for the veterans to be, if people want to donate to the veterans, now there's a separate fund. So, when someone writes a check, now there's a place, and the purpose of a separate fund is that it doesn't get washed back into the General Fund or something.
So, are you guessing, or do you know this to be fact?
I, I am, I'm opining its fact just based on the description. It's a K9 Donation Fund, just from the, from the description.
Well, here's my take on this, and I know this is going to, not the, the best sounding thing in the world, but if somebody can't come and explain this to us, if they don't have enough respect for this office to show up and say, this is what the fund is for, then I say we set this aside until they're interested in showing up. I mean, I love the park system. I have no problem with the park system, District Park Foot System whatsoever, I have no problem with Judge Gumbel and whoever is involved with the park system.
That's a reasonable, that's a reasonable expectation.
But we do have a responsibility to the taxpayers to understand what it is we're approving, and it may or may not be a big deal, I don't know, because I can't ask anybody a question other than you, and you're guessing at it. And so, you know, again, I don't have a particular problem with this budget, or my gut is, no big deal, but how do I know? And so, that's my take on it. The other two, you know, the other two of you can, you know, weigh in and say what you want to say, but my inclination is to set this aside and just have John or else, or somebody come in and explain, what is this, and how is money going to be used, and so on and so forth.
This is a few failed to set.
So, what, what does that, because I haven't seen that letter, what does that letter say?
It's a letter to Ron at the Auditor's Office from Denise Smith, from the Chief of Local Government Services from the Auditor of State's David Ossos Office. Says, I am writing in response to the request to create a K9 Fund for the Jogga County Park District. Park Districts are not taxing authorities as defined in Section 5705.01 of the Vice Code, and therefore need not request permission to establish any funds. If you have any questions concerning this letter, please do not hesitate to contact me, it would be Thompson at an 800 number. That's all it is. That's all it says.
Well, and I apologize, because I didn't catch this one on the agenda, or I would have called them prior to coming.
Well, I apologize, because we could've called them tomorrow, yesterday, maybe someone would've showed up, you know, with everything else going on, and we couldn't do that.
And there's no crisis here, I mean, they don't have to, we can set this fund up next week or whatever, so, so that's my suggestion. I'm only one voice here, so. So, you want to move to table? Yeah, I'd like to table, come in, just to ask them the question. That way, I know we've done our job, we've asked the questions, and we can move on. Got a second?
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillane?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillane?
Thanks. And my apologies to anybody in the Park Board, I'm serious, so don't make this into admission, we do have this.
Looking at the clock on the wall, I think it takes us to number 21. You want, you want to do it now, or you want?
You have to do it in your, in your schedule.
We advertised, I mean, I think a couple minutes either way, but I don't think we're going to go from number eight to number 21 in a couple minutes.
Or up to four.
Anyone else on the agenda that? Yeah, that needs to go first before we do this.
Because the tax, the tax pledge you're hearing typically will probably go on 13, 20.
Dog Wardens on here.
Oh, I got them.
So, I need a motion to waive the reading, it will be on August.
I'll move to waive the.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillane?
Aye.
Mr.?
Okay, gentlemen, want to take a seat down in the audience, you're not blinded by the view.
Don't worry about the blind, it's a stiff neck.
We'll do the lights. So, easier to sleep, but it's an exciting presentation. For anyone here that doesn't know her yet, I'd like to introduce Ann Racic, she's our new Budget and Finance Administrator. She's only been here a little more than a month, and she's come up to speed in an amazingly fast period of time, and we're very fortunate to have her, here working on the budget. And we're very fortunate to have her here working on the budget. So I will, I will kind of lead off. We'll pass it back and forth as we go through this. This is the hearing for the 2017 tax budget. Just to kind of do an overview, the county is on a calendar fiscal year, January through December. And part of our budget cycle is, we ask the departments in March to submit their budget requests by inputting data into our financial system. And we gather the information here in this office. We give them guidelines of what to, how to, you know, things not to exceed. Like we put in there that there will be no salary increase in the tax budget. But we do allow for a 12% increase in hospitalization, because that's the kind of expense that tends to trend upward despite our best efforts. So the departments submit the data. They're supposed to have it in by May 13th. Most of them did that. And then between that time and now, Ann has been reviewing the budgets, going through them, and creating the tax budget that was in review here. At the end of the hearing, the Commissioners, you know, anyone else can ask questions after the hearing, occurring the hearing. And next week, we'll ask the Commissioners to consider having on the agenda for the July 7th meeting approval of the tax budget. And following that, and using September and October, we have budget hearings where the departments come in and we talk about what their requests are for the actual budget, which is formerly known as the permanent appropriation, which is usually adopted in December. The permanent appropriation will look a lot like the tax budget, but it'll have additional things in there based on specific requests from departments and based on the budget's ability to, to manage those additional expenditures. After the first of the year, when we know what our actual carryover is, there'll be supplemental appropriations. And that kind of completes the budget year as we go into 2017. Okay, so I'm gonna turn over to Ann, and she's gonna talk about the tax dollar.
All right. Well, you thought we'd start off today with just talking a little bit about where your $1 of property tax that you pay goes into the county. On average, just a little over 21 cents goes to the county programs. The remaining, almost 79 cents, is in the local community, the local school districts, joint vocational schools, and the public library. This chart breaks down how the 21 cents that goes into the county taxes is broken out. You'll see significant portion goes to the general fund, about 18.64, or about 4 cents of your 21 cents goes into the general fund. The rest, you'll see, goes into children's services, senior citizens, mental health, road and bridge, the Park District and Health District, which are not actually within the Commissioners' budget, and the developmental disabilities.
And note that everything except the general fund has been voted on by the residents. And one of the interesting things about this office is that Commissioners in this office will tend to get complaints about how much people are paying in property taxes. But again, we want to emphasize through this slide that the county as a whole is only getting 21.22% of that, on average. It depends on the community you're in. So county's only getting an average of 21.22%, and with the exception of the 18.64% of the general, that is the general fund, that part is called inside milers. That's not voted on. Everything else here has been voted on by the residents of the county. Okay, so I'm gonna go over the tax budget guidelines. As I indicated before, departments complete their budget requests. We also put in revenue estimates, and different entities are responsible for the revenue estimations. For example, this office estimates what the sales tax is going to be. And we look at prior year performance, and based on that, we make an estimate on sales tax. And, you know, other departments in the auditor will estimate property tax, and the treasurer will estimate interest income and so forth. So based on that, we know what our revenues think, we think are going to be. We do an estimate of what we're gonna have as a carryover balance at the beginning of the year. And the total of the expenses, or the revenues we expect to get and the beginning balance are called resources. So we then look at what our general fund expenditure is gonna be, and we balance them in total to what we think we're gonna have on hand in terms of resources to pay for them, so we have a balanced budget. And put a little visual in there. That happens to be, you can't see it that well, an overhead of the 470 office complex where we're at. Okay, and we have a picture of our safety center. And for an overview, right now, the 2017 tax budget is a total of $117,770,000. And this includes all funds, including the general fund at about $32 million. Special revenue funds are at $64.4 million. Debt services at $3.8 million, capital projects $4.4 million. Enterprise funds of $10.1 million. Fiduciary funds of 23.2, I'm sorry, $2.3 million. And internal service funds at $700,000. So the general fund budget is $32 million, because that equates to the resources that I mentioned earlier. We received a total of $34 million in requests against that budget. The largest items that weren't funded included $773,000 in equipment requested by the Board of Elections, $89,000 requested equipment for the sheriff, along with $85,000 of other expenses for the sheriff, and a total of $828,000 for the maintenance department, which includes $405,000 in contract services, $175,000 in salaries, two proposed hires, $120,000 additional for jail maintenance, and $58,000 for equipment.
Okay. The available resources that we're estimating for 2017 are $32 million. We are arriving at that $32 million, assuming a $4.5 million carryover from 2016, $27.5 million of new revenue in 2017 to get us to the $32 million of revenue. The actual carryover for the past five years has ranged between $3.7 and $7.3 million. So the $4.5 million that we are assuming is a conservative estimate for next year. The $27.5 million that I mentioned that we are estimating for next year is made up, as you see here. More than half of that, as Dave indicated, is coming from the sales tax that we are estimating at $13 million for 2017. Another quarter comes from the property taxes down there, which the Auditor's Office does the estimate for, which is just over $7.5 million. You'll see there's a lot of other line items in here that make up the rest of our budget. Some of the bigger ones are the department fees and fines, which are about 9% of the total. Those come from the fees that are charged to residents by the auditor, building department, the courts, the reporter, treasurer, and Board of Elections. There's the property transfer tax, which is the fees that are paid when a property need transfers to a new owner in the county. We'll skip over other for a moment, because that's kind of the last bucket. The casino tax is a tax on the gross earnings of the casino. 51% of the casino tax that is collected is set aside for the counties, and then that is allocated to the counties based on the county populations. For next year, we are actually estimating $850,000. That's actually an estimate from the Auditor's Office. Finally, up there, we do have the prisoner housing, which is the revenue generated from the housing of inmates from other counties and from the federal programs. We are leaving the estimate this year at $500,000. It's been sort of up and down, as we'll show you in a chart that Dave's gonna have here in a second. So we've gone ahead and left that at the $500,000 that we have for 16. And finally, the local government tax is really the smallest piece now. This is a sharing tax that comes back to the counties from the state. This used to be a much larger portion of the budget. The casino tax is, was expected to take up some of that difference. But again, the casino tax is not quite as stable as the, the other local government tax.
And interest, you see how small the interest income slices? That used to be a very significant piece of the pie, well, in excess of a billion dollars. But with current interest rates or earnings on interest being around half percent in a lot of cases, that has shrunk down to a very small slice of the pie. Okay. Prepare to be bored. This is my very favorite slide. I go through this every year, and just have to put up with me on this. This is a summary of general fund revenue sources from 2008 to 2017. And this slide's important to understand, because you look at 2008, for county government, that was the last year when revenue was pretty strong prior to the overall economic crash that started in 2008. It didn't really affect county revenue until 2009. So we had a pretty healthy year. We had $28.4 million in 2008. And you notice, you can't see, I'm sorry, and I apologize for the colors on this slide. This pretty good slice right here was prisoner housing. We, with our jail that opened at the end of 2005, we had very healthy revenue coming in from prisoner housing. Our sales tax was relatively strong. So we, we had good revenues from all of our sources. Our interest income, let's see if I can get all the slots down. That may have been the slice here. It was a pretty good slice at one point, as I said. Interest income back in those days was very good. Well, then at the end of 2008, the bottom dropped out, and revenues really took a nosedive. So you see, our revenue dropped from 2008 was $28.4 million, down to $24.5 million. And our sales tax went down, things dropped in almost every category. Our prisoner housing dropped considerably. Here's the slice now. It's less than half the size of the 2008 numbers. We were advised by Kiyoka County early that year that they didn't have money to pass anymore and house prisoners, so they're not gonna bring prisoners there anymore. 2009, we actually had to decertify revenue. As we said earlier in the presentation, we're very conservative on our revenue estimates. We always want the surprises to be good ones, like, oh, we got more money than we were planning. In 2009, we were caught off-guard by the depth and the impact of the overall economy and things like prisoner housing suddenly shutting down early in the year. So we had to decertify revenue. So you see then, over years, the numbers start going back up. So a lot of people, and I bring this up because a lot of, a lot of taxpayers, a lot of other county departments, they have this idea that we've, we're out of the recession and times are good again. And I'm not here to say that times are bad, but I want to do a little bit of reality check. One of the things we started doing in 2010, or 2010, is we put back into the general fund a half mil that prior to that had been siphoned off and put in debt reduction. So it was like, through 2009, it was like we had an auto withdrawal from our paycheck. It was like, we're putting money out of our paycheck right in savings, so we don't see it. We're putting $1.5 million right out of the general fund. We're telling the auditor, "Don't put it in the general fund. Put it right in debt reduction." So then there's this slice that goes all the way across here, we call millage shift. And that's just showing that the general fund, from 2010 on, started having that $1.5 million that used to be put in the debt retirement. It was put in the general fund. Because we just didn't think we could afford to put a million and a half every year in debt retirement, because revenue had dried up so, so significantly. So all these comparisons going forward, you really have to deduct, if you want to compare with, say, 2008, you've got to take a million and a half dollars off of these numbers to equate to that $28.4 million. So you look at 2015, that was a very good year for revenue, $31.5 million. But if you deduct that million and a half that wasn't being taken out, to compare with $28.4, we only had $30 million. So our income had grown $1.6 billion in seven years. Now think about inflation over seven years. Think about the effect of your household. Think about the things that were going up during that time. And you can see that our revenue really hasn't grown if you take, you take inflation into account. And that's kind of the point of this chart, to show people that the new normal in local government has been pretty much flat revenue. So we have to be very frugal in how we spend money. We have to be smarter how we spend money. Now you see in 2016 and 2017, you see the revenue drop, and that's because we're budgeting in a conservative way. So we actually brought in $31.5 million last year. We're only targeting that to be $26.2 million for 16. That's because we haven't adjusted the revenues up in our budget to what we'll probably get. That'll help us have a larger-than-budget carryover at the beginning of 2017. 2017, though, we are forecasting to have more money coming in, which we'll cover here in a little bit. You know, so our revenue will go up. There's an assumption there of a carryover that we can never be sure about until we, in January, we see what we actually have to work on. So I apologize for this long explanation, but to me, this is a very important slide.
Dave, do me a favor and explain that carryover concept, because it is a very important thing, and people don't pick up on that.
Yes, yeah. At the end of the year, and the general fund will look and see what's in the bank balance. And say it's, in our budget, we're gonna assume we're gonna have $4.5 million available to spend. And that'll be net of any purchase orders, or we call them encumbrances. We've said, "Okay, all that money, that cash we have, we've already committed to spend X number of dollars of that cash." So that's gonna be the encumbrance. Say we have $7 million actual cash available at the end of the year. And say we have about $600,000 in encumbrances, which is pretty typical, which means we have $6.4 million actually available as real carryover, okay? But in our budget, we're gonna assume that we're gonna have $4.5 million. So we say, "Okay, what do we have extra to spend and do supplemental appropriations on? It'll only be that $1.9 million over above the $4.5 that's already gonna be baked into this budget."
If the use of the carryover is what, I mean, there's a purpose for the carryover. It's not just extra cash laying in the bank. It's actually the purpose for it.
Well, the purpose is, it begins your fiscal year before you start receiving money from a lot of sources, like your property tax settlement doesn't begin to come into the county until February. We don't actually see that settlement until March. So part of the carryover for any local government is, you have to have some cash to operate on until some of these periodic payments that come in chunks start coming in. The other purpose of the carryover, again, is to fund all the things that we weren't sure we would have money for in this tax budget. Because we have to project a very conservative carryover, and we predicted it, $4.5 million. So we don't fund capital expenditures we probably need to make. We don't fund any projected raises. Now, ideally, we would hope to be able to provide some raises, because with inflation, if we don't provide any raises to our employees, their purchasing power's gonna, gonna decline. So that would be one of the, one of the ways we might spend some of that carryover is that if it appears that we have money enough to afford a raise in the general fund. And we use the general fund as kind of our barometer for all the rest of the funds in the county. That's what we use it for. Did that explain it to you?
Well, yeah, the point, and I'll just reinforce it, is we live on that money.
Right.
Carryover is what we live on, because we're not getting the checks coming in until,
Right.
you know, after a few months into the year. So we, part of the carryover is you live on that. The other part in the conservative philosophy that you talked about, which is different from some other counties, is that we're putting money in the bank, so to speak. Now we can make logical, rational decisions that will impact that year, positive decisions of things we can do. But we're not spending money we don't have.
Exactly.
Which is what some other organizations, and I won't name them, Noaka, in Cleveland does. They take out loans on money they don't have. Noaka.
All right, onward.
Okay. Just to give you an idea of the available resources. So actual 2014 up there, you see our, again, our carryover balance was $7.2 million. In '15, it was $6.8. In '16, it was $7.3. So again, over the last three years, it's been about $7.1 million. You'll see the revenues, the actual revenue line below that each year has grown a little bit each year from $29.1 to $31.5. Again, in our budget for 2016, we have a conservative estimate of $26.2. And for '17, we've taken that up to $27.5, an increase of $1.3 million. On the next slide, I'll show you how that $1.3 breaks out. Again, the biggest piece here is gonna be the sales tax revenue. For 2016, again, there's a $12 million budget estimate for sales tax. We've increased that to $13 million for 2017. Again, the Auditor's Office gave us an additional $100,000 estimate on the casino tax and another $200,000 of other revenue, predominantly made up of departmental fees and fines. Get us to the $1.3 million change.
And again, we, we up the sales tax revenue from 12 to 30. And again, we upped the sales tax revenue from 12 to 13 based on observation of actual receipts over, you know, we felt, you know, we want to be conservative, although we don't want to be unrealistically conservative. Based on collections thus far, we felt comfortable taking that to $13 million for next year. Okay. So the general fund operating expenses, then, we matched that estimated resources at $32 million. That's a total of $3 million over what we budgeted for this year.
$300,000.
$300,000, I'm sorry, $300,000. And it's a, that represents a 0.9% increase. These increases are based on having a 0% wage increase in the budget thus far, except for mandated by labor agreements. We budgeted for a 12% increase in hospitalization costs. And other expenditures have been held flat or reduced. And most large equipment requests have not been funded at this point until we know what our carryover is like. So looking at it a different way, again, the $32 million in expenses for next year, $300,000 increase, less than a percent increase, you know, in the overall budget. That increase of $300,000 comes from that 12% hospitalization representing a half million dollars in the general fund. The increases from the mandated salary increases, along with the Medicare and Oprah's contributions, is $100,000. We're saving $200,000 by not funding equipment this time. And other reductions amount to another $100,000 savings for an overall tax budget change of $300,000 increase. The, might mention here some other detail behind that. That the reduction in the equipment from '16 to '17 equated to $199,000 overall. And also, there was a remaining difference in the veteran service budget reduction, which I think is covered on the next slide. They had asked for a temporary bump of their budget for '16, which they have now for '17. They've scaled their request back, and we appreciate that.
Okay. So the $28.6 million that you see on here is actually the $32 million tax budget less $3.4 million transfers out in contingency. That leaves us with the departmental costs. This breaks it down into the different categories and the 2016 budgets versus the 2017 tax budget and the change in that percentage. Public safety is the sheriff, coroner, and building departments. Legislative and executive is most of the other elected officials, including the auditor, commissioners, prosecutor, recorder, treasurer, ADP board, maintenance planning, and board of elections. And you'll see the changes there are, you know, pretty small in most of these categories. Judicial is the courts and the judges, including common pleas, the juvenile, probate, clerk reports, and the public defender. Conservation and recreation, this is a bucket that includes the OSU Extension Office and the Soil and Water. You'll see we're leaving that at a zero change from the 2016 budget. The human services, as Dave mentioned, this is where the veteran services comes in. And you'll see there's a slight decrease in their budget from last year that they submitted to us. And the health line item is an ORC mandated line item for the treatment of children with handicaps. It is 1/10 of 1 mil that we are required, which is about $300,000. Again, that's not going to change this year. And in the miscellaneous, we have that at no change either. That is funding to the youth center, property and vehicle insurance premiums, postage, just a kind of a catch-all bucket down there. And on the next slide, we just break that out into a pie chart to kind of show you the buckets of where everything goes into. So again, the largest piece of our budget goes into the public safety, then followed by the legislative and executive, and then the judicial, which, again, this is our county portion of this. Some of the judges is actually funded by the state. This is just the county portion that we pay for. And then the small pieces down there for the human services, health, and miscellaneous.
Okay, getting near the end here. I talked briefly about the county debt, and I'm talking specifically about the general fund debt. There is other debt, including our water resources. They're an enterprise fund, and as they build out projects, they're issuing debt. It's funded out of their enterprise fund, so it doesn't affect the general fund budget. What we're talking about here is what the general fund handles. As I mentioned early on, that we had a $3.3 million note issuance from last year, and we're paying down $1.3 million of that. So we're paying off the $800,000 that we borrowed last year and have money available for building projects. And we're paying down another $500,000 on the 800 megahertz radio system, which is on target to have that debt retired in four more years. So that means we're going to be borrowing $2 million to pay off the remainder of that $3.3 million 2016 note on the radio system. And again, if we continue to pay up a half a million on that, we'll have that paid off in four years. Paying down debt rapidly and consistently ensures that we have a good credit rating. Our credit rating is currently AA. As other opportunities come up for the county to consider possible new initiatives, possible new facilities planning, having that good debt will ensure we'll be in a good position to borrow for those projects and have lenders kind of fighting over the opportunity to lend us money. So our overall goal in the budget, as always, we're funding at or below 2016 levels wherever possible. We're considering any capital requests on a case-by-case basis. And we're limiting anything new, any new initiatives, to those which show an immediate return on investment and added value to Joga taxpayers. And there, the final picture is our largest facility, our 24-hour service campus, which kind of represents the future as we look toward new projects for Joga County. Any questions? As always, I told you there'd be crickets at this point.
I'm just shook with the cicadas.
Yeah, very good.
Will this PowerPoint be on your website?
It'll be, it'll actually be put on to the minutes. This will be with the session minutes from today.
Right. Why is it we don't have any cicadas? I was up in Madison shooting last week, and man, I'll tell you what. I missed a couple of clay targets because those cicadas kept getting in the way. I hit them.
Yeah.
That's how I can account for my little scores each year.
Lame of the cicadas. I want to thank Ann Raisak, who's already left. But as I said, she's done a terrific job coming on forward and having us tackle the presentation ready and really come up with the equipment. We're very fortunate.
So we're back to item nine.
Morning.
Morning.
Quiet in here today.
Tab dance?
What was that budget here? You kind of put a damper on it?
Yeah.
Number nine is a situation where my employee down at the Record Center, Michelle Post, had a family emergency and came to us late last week to ask for a day. She did those her own, so maybe get down the scene on the forty pats. But, so she's going to, we gave her the day. We just needed to retroactively, we'll extend her probation by one day.
The Archives and Records Center is requesting the board approve an unpaid leave of absence for Michelle Post, Archives and Records clerk, number 2607, for June 24, 2016. And this will extend her probationary period by one day.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spidler?
Aye.
Mr. Pimple?
Aye.
And as you recall, last week, we talked about how we had made the change in our probationary policy and that there was a handful of people who had chosen to stay under the old policy. These are the last two, and we just need to adjust the motions for when they were hired so that it reflects the raises that went into effect in March.
The Archives and Records Center is requesting the board amend the motion from February 2, 2016, to correct the post-provationary salary rate for Michelle Post, Archives and Records Center clerk, number 2607, from $12.16 per hour to $12.40 per hour to be effective at the end of probation in August 13, 2016. The county home is requesting the board amend the motion from February 2, 2016, to correct the post-provationary salary rate for Ashley Clark, senior attendant, number 1504, from $12.16 per hour to $12.40 per hour to be effective at the end of probation on July 15, 2016.
I'll make those motions.
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spidler?
Aye.
Mr. Pimple?
Aye.
Michael. Morning, Michael.
Morning.
Hi, Mike.
How are you doing?
How are you?
Fantastic. And yourself?
Good.
Be better.
What you got?
Okay, years ago, departments used to be able to have their own building codes or whatever. So they had an appeal board. And if, for some reason, you didn't like what the building code was, you could go and run the appeals board, and they would grant a variance. We went to the state building code, which basically you can't add any addendums or anything else. So it kind of fell by the wayside.
Was that mandated by the, part of, we're going to the state code, is that mandated?
It's mandated. If you're going to enforce the building code, you have to enforce the state code with no addendums. Other than up here, they allow you to increase your snow loads because we're in the snow belt.
And the state code is based on an international code?
Right. It's based on the 2009 IRC.
So Belgium is governing our Ohio state code. The code is minimum, right?
It's minimum standards.
If you want to exceed...
You can always exceed. You just can't...
Take away from...
Take away.
It would be international code.
So basically, there was nothing left to appeal. We have another project that's commercial that came up. And I found out that residential appeal board would handle all cases for floodplain air issues. I thought that was under the state since it was under the building code. So we're resurrecting the appeals board. Now, it might meet once a year. It might meet every 10 years. I mean, it's not, it's as needed, and we haven't really needed it in the last eight years. But this one issue came up, so to be on the safe side, we're going to resurrect the residential appeal board where we'd like to. And I spoke to these gentlemen, and Mr. Merrifield was on the original board back when. 1976.
Way back.
So he's got a lot of experience with it. We have an architect, an engineer, and a mason, and we just haven't had a selection yet for a general contractor. But we figured we'd get the board going, and then when we did come up, when we'd present the board with a general contractor to sit on and be a five-member board, then it's not a paid position, so there's no cost to the county. And it would only be as needed. So like I said, it's not a function that would be going every month or whatever. In the old days, we probably had one about every month. And probably 95% of the time, people would get what they asked for for appeal. If it was reasonable, 5%, they wouldn't grant it, so... That's basically what we're asking for today.
Okay.
Question, go ahead.
You might want to add, because it's supposed to be a five-year term. Each one is supposed to be a five-year term.
Oh, yeah.
Because they were staggered prior. We had to set them up to be staggered again to bring it back.
Yeah, so everybody doesn't come up the same time, and you're just going to stagger the position. And you gentlemen, architect or general contractor, please let us know.
I know a general contractor or two, so I can forward just the name if you'd like.
The building department is requesting the board appoint the following members to the residential appeals board pursuant to Section 110 of the Residential Code of Ohio. Charles Chip has engineer for a five-year term ending June 28, 2021. Randall Palarchek, masonry contractor, for a four-year term ending June 28, 2020. Martin Merrifield, electrical contractor, for a three-year term ending June 28, 2019. Rick Richards Smith, architect, for a two-year term ending June 28, 2018.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spidler?
Aye.
Mr. Pimple?
Aye. Do you have his number?
Yeah.
I can get him for you. You know, you know who he is, right?
Yeah.
So I'd tell him I forward, and he'll probably get all TikTok.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay?
Thanks.
Thanks for your time. Hello, Kelly.
Good morning.
Morning.
Welcome back. I'm here today, we have to update our grant management system with OCEAN, which is the system that we use online to apply for our grants. And actually, we're kind of going to be doing our drawdown request and everything else through the system. We have to update the information, the contact information, and that every so often. And it is now time to do so.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the Board to execute the development services agency, Office of Community Development contact information form, authorizing access to the OCEAN information system, which is used to apply for and maintain ODD programs and grants.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spidler?
Aye.
Mr. Pimple?
All right. Kelly, what kinds of, thank you. What kinds of grants do you get through the OCEAN system?
Right now, it's just the allocation grant and the economic development grant, the ED grant that we're trying to do for EEI right now and our allocation grant.
So how many different systems, if you're looking at getting grants? Because you guys deal with a whole bunch of, you get the HUD grants. Is that...
It's the state, yeah.
How many systems do we use?
We just use one. There are other counties that have, we're small cities, that like the entitlement counties in it. They have a different system that they use because they do so much more than what we do. They're on a completely different scale. They do a lot more grants than we do. We typically only do the allocation and economic development grant.
Do you have a menu system over there for grants? Like, if you wanted to expand, God forbid, our access to grants and so forth? Do you have like a menu, a list of all the places you can go to and systems involved and so on?
Not extensively, just the ones that we have done in the past. We know we're not going to go back to several of those. But we do put them in a legal notice, the Fonzey, just in case we ever want to apply, like the neighborhood stabilization grant, the infrastructure, critical infrastructure grant. But that's still all through ODSA. It's still through that same system. So there could be other grants out there that possibly sometime we could look into. There's really not that much out there for what we do right now. If we did a lot more, like more of an interstate, loan from housing, things like that, then you could get into all of that. So right now, we're pretty, yeah. We're pretty, you know...
I didn't say that. I just...
Kelly, I had gotten an email this morning, actually, from Dave Joyce's office regarding, there's NEH grants, it's a, I could forward you this email, but it's the National Endowment for Humanities, and they got a grant that's here that kind of, you know, can you help, like, the historical society with writing a grant possibly? Because it's like for preservation of, like, homes and, you know, like, historicals type of stuff. I'll forward you this, or I'll call you soon as I get done. And then, maybe you could call somebody down there because you know they're struggling. And this has got a deadline. It's got to be in by the 10th. But could we, if they don't have the people that know how to write grants?
Absolutely. Yeah, we do. We help other departments and other agencies too. They may help. We're more than happy to help them to do that. Yeah, because historic preservation is very, very expensive. So that's why they are providing those grants out there to keep that historic preservation. It's really expensive.
We get some for our courthouse downtown. That's an old, old, old building.
Something up against it.
Okay.
Yeah, but definitely go over it to me.
Yep, I will. I'll send this to you as soon as I leave here, then. So we keep... I'll take them. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Dave, you going to do the next one?
I guess...
I guess I am. As you recall, I, beginning I said I had accepted resignation of a part-time shelter attendant. So this is the other part of that question. The dog warden is asking for permission to advertise for a new part-time shelter attendant.
Dog warden is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of part-time shelter attendant under six zero seven dash one. This position will remain posted until.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Mr. Rear?
Aye.
Mr. Clay?
Yes. That's timely because there's a stray dog running around.
Yeah.
You know, that dog keeps checking you out.
I know. He comes by and smells my shoes every time.
You either stepped in something or you got something.
I missed him.
Sheriff, I, I keep pointing over here. I don't know if there's something you need to be involved with or what the deal is, but.
Well, he doesn't linger, so.
Okay.
That's a good sign.
We don't wanna take any risks here. You might wanna, you know, get involved proactively, so.
Morning.
Get your note out.
All right.
And the first one is for Nathan. I was here last week or a week before and was gonna have him start on the eleventh. But he called and said he really wants to start working and I wanna push it back to July fifth. So which will help us out possible. So I wanna make his start date July fifth, not July one.
The maintenance department is requesting the board amend the motion from June twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, correcting the start date to read approved hiring Nathan G. Munt, position of full-time maintenance worker number nineteen-four to be effective July fifth, two thousand sixteen, at the rate of thirteen dollars fifty-seven cents per hour with a one-year probationary period.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Mr. Rear?
Aye.
Mr. Clay?
The next one's for Joe. He has put in a request for involuntary disability separation. We'd like to go ahead and prove it for July second. Here's a guy that has really done a tremendous job within the county, from above and beyond. He has been, he takes courses for working on our boilers and gets licensed for low-pressure boilers. Went ahead and worked on locksmithing so that he could do the basic locksmith on basic doors and everything. Like I said, this guy's really gone from above and beyond a lot of things, even when, when he's been sick for the last couple of years. And still comes back and keeps up his licenses and everything. So it's sad, but I think it's great. He will be very messy. Yes.
The maintenance department is requesting the board acknowledge receipt of a letter from Joe McIs, senior trade mechanic, dated June twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, requesting to waive his right to a hearing containing involuntary disability separation proceedings initiated by the board and formally request a voluntary disability separation from his position at the John County Maintenance Department. The maintenance department is requesting the board grant the employee, Joe McIs, the request for a voluntary disability separation pursuant to FOIC one-two-three, one-through-thirty-dash-zero-two, to be effective July second, two thousand sixteen, and further remove him from paid administrative employment at that time.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Mr. Rear?
Aye.
Mr. Clay?
Glenn?
Yes, sir.
Two things. First thing, I was at the prosecutors yesterday. And you have someone up working there that's reattaching the cabinets to the wall. And.
John Bimble.
Well, I don't know who it is. I just know that prosecutor said, guys doing a great job. Cabinets are looking great. Looks like they'll stand the law for another, however long and old that building is. But yeah, I wanted to pass on, so you could pass it on to the employee, the accomplice.
Much appreciated.
Second, every time we have a, a presentation, a video presentation in this room in the past, I've always sat up near the front where I can see the screen. Today I sat in the back row because I wanted to doze off. No, I sat in the back. I sat, I sat in the back row.
We would let in, listen to that.
Yeah. And, and visually, I could have sat in the hall. I couldn't see anything on here. I, just bringing this up for general, if there's some way to maybe install two sets of shades in the windows, a dark, you know, well, I think.
The real answer, I've been waiting for the price to go down. The real answer is to get a flat panel L C D. The other thing that would give us is the, the colors on the charts are never the same as on this.
No, they, they look like you did them in Coma Fly.
Yeah, I know.
But, but I'm thinking at the very least, if there was an opportunity to put a, a opaque set like this, but a more, another roll of shades in the same window jams that you could pull it down and it would be darker. Because I never sat back there to watch a video presentation, but it was. If I didn't have it in, if I didn't have it in, in hard copy here, I'd be struggling.
Yeah, I mean, if, I mean, we'll have, let the trout a flat panel, maybe bright enough where you don't have to do a lot more with the shades. Just I think.
Yeah, I, I.
Look into it. Well, the other, the other thing we could do, just being that we're frugal, cheap.
Yeah.
A pull-down screen here, which reflects better than the wall, would be.
That would help.
Straightforward answer. And, and it would mount there in the ceiling. I'm sure you got something to you can mount. It might be something to consider.
We can try that first.
Flat panels are pretty cheap.
Yeah, I mean, they're getting cheaper.
But I don't know that a flat panel gives us as much flexibility because you can put a pretty good sized screen up in that area. And a flat panel, you know, would be costing over a thousand bucks probably. The other thing, just for an awareness standpoint, I talked to one yesterday, I, I'm, I'd like to see us improve our audio in this room a little bit. People in back can't hear and there's vibration. Glenn sits in the back and he's telling me about all the goofiness back there. We can afford a thousand bucks for a mic system in here. And so I've asked him to quote for us, a mic system that's portable, something to take down the building gate, a set of speakers that we could put in this room so that people can hear, hear what's going on and, you know, record it and all that kind of stuff. So just for awareness, Glenn, he said he was gonna work on that.
He actually gave me a quote here. He originally got a quote. Now, this isn't, this one isn't portable. But this was a amplifier and a multi-speaker system that would go in one of those ceiling tiles in the back. So the people who can't hear would have, the sound would be back there. So it kind of matched the whole thing. So that was like thirteen hundred thirty dollars.
I'm just laughing because I'm of the age that remembers laugh, laughing Saturday night. And now for the hearing impaired news. Skip, could stand at the end there and, and just yell it out. My wife is always complaining about my loss of hearing, so. Excuse me? The TV way up, you know, shooting a shot camera without, you know, protectors probably not smart. But so anyway, so just awareness. Thanks, Glenn. We need to probably look at this. Mic here is just not working. I don't think anybody, Sheriff, can you hear this mic?
I have to turn my hearing aids off, but.
Thank you. I mean, I looked at the Shardon system over there. I mean, you got this, of course, I don't think we can afford any Shardon.
No, we can't afford a Shardon. Shardon's got a lot of money.
They got a really slick system over there. A little innovative mic sits it on the counter.
Oh, yeah.
Pretty cool. Aye.
I concur.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, the cabinets are hanging on the wall now, right?
Yeah, they were really bad. They were pretty drippy.
Yeah, I was impressed when I went in and saw hydraulic jacks and all kinds of equipment. Oh, yeah.
He's saying super about moving everything out of there and again, we haven't had to do anything. Before I start, can I get that email too from Congressman Joyce's office?
Yep.
I'm part of the Burton Historic District and we found out we were awarded the Ohio Chautauqua program for next summer from the Arts Council.
How long ago was that done? That was.
Five or six years ago. Uh, C I N D I H A Y.
I wanna make this not public, part of the public record.
Well, is it public? It's a public email.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah.
It's not a private.
I don't wanna put at risk your.
G C P A L. Thank you.
Yep.
Might engage your new internet guy over there more heavily if you get word it's being coming.
Right, right, right. I have a child for it all the way. It's fun. Replica to it. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, I sent it to you. So, yeah. So are you with, with the Burton?
I'm part of the Burton Historic District. I, I help with that.
Yeah, so.
Are you affiliated with Century Village or is that separate?
Well, we're, it's separate. We're the, we're a separate group, but we're, most of the programs will be held. Programming will be held at the Historic.
Century.
But they do a lot of programs like induction because it's, the theme is Ohio in nature. So I know Corn Planter is one of the characters. It's, it's gonna be featured. And so we're gonna do some things enjoying with like the Burton District. It's wonderful. We probably will be hitting these up to M C something event, so you may hear about it again. So, sorry.
Where at? Eighteen.
Let me ask you here. Don't you think that that would be a good thing for the Burton District to take on? Is that, is that historical society there?
Oh, we'd like to take it over. I don't know. I mean, it's certainly funding wise, they are always struggling. But I don't know. I didn't thought about it.
It's not a bad idea, actually.
Yeah, I mean, I know funding is, is a catch to struggle with. Having all these little festivals, which certainly is good for Burton. It brings people and, and they do a fabulous job with the apple butter festival. I know my family's involved in the the antique power show that's held in July. That brings a lot of people.
Do you make apple butter?
I help stir and then we sell trouble on ancestors cheese for the Burton Historic District there.
When I was growing up, we did, that was an annual thing, making apple butter. Got a big copper kettle lined with pennies. So to keep the apple butter from sticking to the bottom, the bottom of the kettle. It was a huge copper kettle. I remember it to be this big round when I was little. Of course, maybe it was only this big. But my grandfather lined with pennies and then like one of us would have to continue to stir it.
How do you now adjust the pennies by mistake?
On the bottom of the apple butter. You just skim it off, you know, all the oil around. So the pennies don't float. They're on the bottom of, on the bottom of the pot. And so we used to, you know, slaughter pigs and chickens and make apple butter. So you're here for the V O C.
Right. Just my annual grants. I'm asking for the same level of funding that I did, we did last year to service victims of felony level crimes through the Commonwealth.
So like, let me ask you a question about this. Dave Joyce, the predecessor, had actually brought up in a budget meeting one time, consolidating all the V O C programs and so forth. What is your thought on that?
So it, it varies by county. We're one of the only counties that do have different grants, other, you know, surrounding counties certainly have one program where you know, all the advocates are out at the same office. It seems to work here. We, you know, I work in conjunction with the other, with the municipal court advocate. She's wonderful. She's given me heads up on cases that are coming up felony level. The Sheriff's Department advocate, she's awesome with keeping advocates informed until the case gets to the prosecution stage.
The, the argument that I heard made, which made sense to me at the time, and I continue to ask this question, explore on this a little bit, is you kind of lose economies of scale when you have multiple V O Cs. You could have a different organization in every organization. In addition to that, there's disconnects. And that was what David explained in the budget meeting. Sometimes the handoff is not clean from, you know, representative to representative. And so you can improve the handoff process. So I'm just curious, at some point in time, we may discuss that or, you know.
Sure. I mean, sometimes it gets confusing, I think, for victims when, you know, they start out with one advocate and then if the case, if someone's like arrested or, you know, immediately, the case will go to municipal court. So they're with one advocate there. And then when it gets bound over to felony level court, then I take over and then I'm a different advocate. So oftentimes you have one victim dealing with three different advocates.
Right. And that was part of the challenge that David pointed out. He said it might hit smoother or better situation if you had everybody in one office, so to speak.
Yeah, that, I mean, that is probably true. And that's why it's so important to keep the lines of communication open and collaboration and working together.
Prosecutor's offices requesting the board approve and authorize the electronic submission of the Victim of Crime Act Voca two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, grant application for the John County Prosecutor Victim Witness Program Grant in the amount of seventy thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars, sixty-five thousand nine hundred sixty dollars federal local bond, sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars local county management, State Victim Advocacy Act, S V A A, in the amount of four thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars with no local match, within the period October first, two thousand sixteen to September third, two thousand seventeen.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Mr. Rear?
Aye.
Mr. Clay? Mr. Clay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Part of an intro, a brief update of the prisoner housing business. Through the end of May, we had invoiced out for twenty sixteen in excess of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars prisoner housing fees. When you take a projected June, it puts us right on target for our internal target of one point one to one point two million revenue from prisoner housing. With that, we were approached by the Village of Hunting Valley. This would be again, another smaller contract using the same template as we've used with Mayo Village and.
Shred Falls.
Yes, yes. And some of those, so proud to say that the reputation of our facility continues to attract new business. And while again, while this is not, I don't anticipate this to be as large as some of our bigger contracts. Having that diversity, in my opinion, is one of the ways that perhaps we may minimize downturns in local communities, things like that.
The Sheriff's Office is requesting the board to have an executive agreement for boarding of prisoners buying between the John County work publishers and the Village of Hunting Valley.
So we're gonna get a higher grade of criminal out of Hunting Valley?
One might think that, but they don't normally take out franchises to work specific areas. They're quite mobile, so.
Just curious, you know, Hunting Valley and.
I thought about it, but I ain't said.
And they'll drive around them.
They go to the crime in a Cadillac versus going in a, you know, being a bus to Alexis versus the.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Rear?
Aye.
Mr. Clay?
I do have a question for you though. When you first came up and you talked about the four hundred and eighty thousand.
Yes.
Now, that's a gross number.
That's built up. Yeah. Yes.
What is it, what is the expense?
You know, arguably.
I don't know that there's a tip of it because somebody could come in with a medical or something.
Medical expenses are passed on to the.
Okay, that's in addition to.
In addition to the daily per diem price. You know, arguably, we don't turn any more lights on or any more heat or air. In fact, our meal costs run about a dollar and a quarter a meal. So that would be additional.
Seventy-five a day.
Right. So that would come off seventy-five a day. One could anticipate certainly a little bit of wear and tear and laundry, uniforms. Ballpark, I use the figure in my mind, with those types of costs, it'd be in the neighborhood of five, six bucks a day. You know, there may be some additional water consumed and whatnot, but the bottom line is much of this comes back. We don't add personnel. The way that our, our building is structured, they'd be like taking a, a school classroom from twenty-one to twenty-two people.
So it's relatively insignificant of.
Yeah. Yes.
All right, then. Thank you.
Good question. Good question. Good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm number twenty and me.
Okay.
On behalf of Water Resources, in going back through paperwork while I was off, I discovered that there was in April and in May, two motions made to award the contract for the cooling station. And in actuality, the site owner was supposed to be executing the contract, which you did. It's just the motion and it's reflected in the minutes as being a second bid award. So in order for me to actually return the unsuccessful bond for that project, I need to correct paperwork. So it's just more of a clerical error that just I'm correcting.
Good.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board amend the motion. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board amend the motion from May 10th, 2016, to read approve and execute the contract with Workman Industrial Services Incorporated for Coolane Station replacement project in the amount of $102,102.
Make the motion. Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
All right. So it's something that the board has annually done. These are students from different schools throughout the county that participate in a state science day. This year, it was held on May 14th, 2016, with more than 1,100 students representing 319 schools from 69 counties throughout Ohio, from grades five through 12. And I have ten resolutions before you today. I have a brief, Megan Banu, the first one is a 10th grader at Notre Dame. She lives in Shred Falls, and she, her project was called Relax, and she received a superior rating. Mina Carr Schohan is a 9th grader from West Joga High School. She lives in novelty. Her project was placebo electrolyte effects of catering in orange juice, and she received an excellent rating. Kelly Faber is 7th grader at St. Mary's School. She lives in Chardon. Her project was called Volts and Beads, and she received a superior rating. Robert Kent was 7th grader at St. Anselm School. He lives in Shred Falls. His project was titled, Our Microplastics Creating the Watershed of Jod County. He received a superior rating, but also received the Cleveland Museum of Natural History's Outstanding Naturalist Award. Lindsay Kulp is a 9th grader at West Joga High School. She lives in Chesterland. Her project was titled, The Effects of Ultraviolet Light A on Bacteria as a Viable Mechanism for Disinfecting Tantaline Water, and received an excellent rating. Amar Love is a love creator at Hawkins School. Is in Ridgefield. His project was Ramen Spectral Classification of Mineral and Collagen-Downed Water in Bone as a Novel Predictor of Bone Strength.
That's my favorite.
Wow.
He received a superior award and also the Ken Science Scholarship. Kaylee Malloy was an 8th grader at St. Mary's School. Lives in Chardon. Her project was titled, I Have Ninety-Nine Problems and Microbeads Are One. She received a superior rating and an award for, the Governor's Award for Excellence in Environmental Protection Research. Christopher Moore is a 7th grader at West Joga Middle School. Lives in novelty. His project was the science of fan blades. And, I think it was the US this one, I was doing it yesterday. He received an excellent rating on his project. Kira Oian is an 8th grader at St. Anselm School. Lives in Chesterland. Her project was, What Type of Ankle Brace is the Most Affordable, with a superior rating and also a Future Physician Scientist Award. And Matthew Palmer was an 11th grader at West Joga High School. Lives in novelty. His project was called Pressure Peg, and received a superior rating. So the Prosecutor's Office is requesting the board approve, execute the following resolutions, honoring Jod County students for participation in the 68th Annual State Science Day 2016. 16-081 Megan Banu, 16-082 Mina Carr Schohan, 16-083 Ellie Faber, number 16-084 Robert Kent, number 16-085 Lindsay Kulp, number 16-086 Amar Loon, number 16-087 Kaylee Malloy, number 16-088 Christopher Moore, and 16-089 Kira Oian, and number 16-090 for Matthew Palmer.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Rear.
Are kids getting smarter than we were? My science project is how many ping-pongs can bounce off of the glass before you drink the beer? I don't know. Seems like kids are getting smarter. That was a graduate course. It's amazing. No need to fear, future is secure. I have to put it down to study, how many times I can get the officials to sign it.
I have a recent thing up from the soil and water for the environment. It's.
Oh, yeah?
From when we do those two.
I judged a science fair one time, and probably the one, the science project that stuck in my mind the most was that somebody did a study on the effects of various liquids on Tweety, and they had, they had included Coca-Cola, citric acid, milk, and some other things. It was amazing how Coca-Cola dissolved your teeth. It was pretty amazing. You used to use it on rust, on chrome.
Yeah.
Is that right?
I did not know that.
Did they even make tang?
Chrome cleaner.
I didn't think tang existed anymore. I haven't heard any more commercials. The astronauts are drinking.
That's all I have for today. I want to talk about meeting schedule.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.